Favor of Maggie Larson as Chairperson, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Congratulations Maggie, now I can move back to my seat.
Okay.
Hello everyone, welcome. I think we'll also open the floor for a nomination for Vice Chair. Yes, Board Member Marsh.
I nominate Carrie Clark for Vice Chair.
Alright, any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you for serving. Oh, actually can you get my name tattooed? Alright, and at this time, I would like to welcome up some students, Ainsley McKenzie and Matthew from Maplewood to lead us in the pledge. Please, come on up. Whenever you're ready.
Three, two, one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that, thank you, thank you. Okay. There's some weather out there, so this meeting, we're gonna try to run as efficiently as possible. Any comments by visitors this evening? Please approach the podium, be happy to hear you, state your address. Seeing none. What is the wish of the board for the consent calendar?
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Second, okay, great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, the consent calendar is adopted. Moving to reports, I'll just give an update. Superintendent Gazinski is not here this evening. He's with his family attending a funeral service for his sister, who passed away recently, so our thoughts with his family. And he wanted to extend his congratulations to all of you on your reelection and election to the school board. Welcome Sarah and Crystal, I look forward to getting to know you over the next few months. Alright. Reports. There are no reports this evening. Agenda item number four, committee reports. There are no committee reports, I'll just remind the chairs of committees to start to schedule your committee meetings with your members. Are, all of you have the committee assignments in front of you. They're subject to change with another Ward Five coming, but that's what we have for now. Any questions, let me know. Any questions about your committees, let your chair know. Alright, and our presentation this evening by Maplewood. Welcome Principal McNally and Vice Principal Ferguson.
Good evening, my name's Devin McNally, I'm the principal of Maplewood Elementary School. Thank you board members for watching our presentation tonight and inviting us to be here. We decided to show you a video tonight. There is no data, it's just the cool things we do at Maplewood.
And I am Max Ferguson, the Assistant Principal. It's great to be here tonight on this rainy snowy evening. We have amazingly creative teachers at Maplewood, and that creativity and their lesson design pays off by way of student engagement. And as much as Devin and I would like to stand here and talk and share data with you, we thought we'd let the true stars of Maplewood shine bright tonight. So, fingers crossed for no technical difficulties.
... awareness today in literacy lab. Why do we do some make awareness?
To help our brains get stronger.
Why do we need stronger brains?
To be a better reader.
Yeah, okay, ready? One, two, three, hit it. Say that.
That.
Now say that, but don't say v.
At.
Sting. Say wheeze.
Wheeze.
Now say wheeze, but don't say w.
Ease.
Say boat.
Boat.
Now say boat, but don't say bu.
Boat.
Say base.
Base.
Now say base, but don't say bu.
Ace.
This Janice and Miss LeBeau's class, we have a wow board. We put our, we get to put our name on the wow board every time we do something great. Things like being kind, helpful classmates, working hard, and being said respectful, responsible. The more times we get our names up there, the more chances we get to get called. We, if we get our, if we get called, we get a certificate and a prize.
Hi, my name is Emily, is Emily Morale. I'm in Ms. McCardick's third grade class. In our classroom, we do flexible seating. We can use things like stools, floor mats, clipboards, bench chairs, and lap desks, or a saucer chair. We, we get to choose where we sit to help us learn best. My favorite is the saucer chair. This is the saucer chair.
Hi, I'm Mr. D at Maplewood Elementary School. This month, we're working on some basketball skills with dribbling, shooting, and passing.
Oh hey Emily, take a shot.
A R R, A R R, stick your hair in your sarjarm. I R Er, I R Er, 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 Er. O R Ork, O R Ork, I want more fish. U R Er, U R Er, sir so doo. E R Er, E R Er, sniff that flower. I N G, I N G, I N G, I am the king.
Road, and what's to the other side? Road builders. Of those three words, which one is our whole topic? The whole book was about roads. Can you move that up to the top? Okay, we have two different opinions here, road and road builders. Why Samaj, did you say road builders could go up there?
They're the ones that's actually building the roads, because the roads can't build themselves.
That's right.
They can't just appear by themselves.
Exactly, so we had lots of different types of machines that they used to build the roads. So should we put road builders above road or next to road?
So today, we did fossils based off dinosaurs and other animals that have bones above water and underwater. They have flaps that you can lift up and reveal what the answer is.
We love going just in the library.
We're learning safe websites to research our favorite subjects.
We have our own workspace, we can create, build, and connect. This is Dash.
And this is Dawn.
We are learning how to make code for robots.
And let's not forget all the amazing books. What is your favorite genre?
One thing I'm really proud of in the fourth grade is our flexible seating. Kids have all kinds of options for where to put their bodies to be focused and ready to learn. This helps with their executive functioning skills as well as their socialization skills. So they can work at small tables in teams, they can work at a traditional desk. Teachers still have the ability to have flexible small groups, or they can cozy up in a beanbag, or up at the countertop while they're trying to do their work. It's a wonderful way for them to learn the best ways that they do their work and for them to have some agency over their learning.
Yes.
Ten, twenty, thirty.
Twenty. Oh.
You wanna change that? Four thirties. You've got one thirty. You've got one thirty, and one extra.
Wait, is this how?
You have four thirties.
Oh.
Job, great, all set. Four thirties.
In fourth grade, we make fleece tie blankets and donate them to Project Linus.
Fourth grade collaborates with the middle school leadership team to make fleece blankets that we donate to Project Linus. Project Linus distributes the blankets to children in need.
Hey guys, what are you doing?
I was making silly sentences.
And what are silly sentences?
It helps us if I need anything, and we just make up like funny things.
What are some sentences that you came up with?
Um, the rabbit saw the frog.
A squirrel jumped over the monkey.
Can you talk about what your subject is in each of your sentences? Taylor, what's your subject? What are you talking about in your sentence?
The rabbit.
And, um, Aliana?
The squirrel.
Squirrel, perfect.
Something really cool we do in fourth grade is our state projects. As you can see in the photos, students got to share their work with other grade levels. We also hosted a state expo where families could come and view all their hard work.
Hi, I'm Katie, the art teacher at Maplewood. And this year, we have been working on 3D sculpture techniques, 2D techniques, and coming up with imaginative ideas.
Students are using connects to build a house that they think will survive an earthquake. They are using designs that they had made together to base their house off of.
So think if you think it will survive an earthquake.
One really cool thing about fourth grade is our giant New Hampshire map.
You can see students understand their community better as they can show some of the places that they go in New Hampshire and where Summersworth is on the map. Students love getting to explore a large map as part of our mapping unit. This allows students to directly interact with their mapping unit in a more hands-on experience and creates instant engagement.
Students in fifth grade are doing a realistic fiction book tasting. Let's hear from a couple. Hi Gianna, what are you up to?
Um, I'm writing down all the books that I look through.
Okay, what are you gonna do in the end?
Um, get one, pick one.
Okay. Uh, what type of books are these?
Um, realistic fiction.
Awesome, I hope you find a good one.
Again, thank you for your time. Thank you for, to our teachers for being awesome every single day, and to our students for engaging in the learning and having a great time in Maplewood.
That's great, thank you so much. Any question, yeah, Board Member Clark? Go ahead.
So I don't have a question, I have just a statement, I guess. I love the little peaks that we can get into the schools every once in a while, and you all did a great job, and all the teachers did a great job as well. But I personally love the little gondola. I remember going on that on a field trip with my kids, a little estuary you'd go to, that's fun. Anyways, thank you for presenting that, appreciate it.
Member Marsh? Yep.
Thank you. First, as a former student of Maplewood School, I certainly have fond memories, and, but I appreciate you bringing us into the Maplewood community, and I appreciate all the efforts that were put into it. I recognize that when these presentations are made, it's in between your other, all your other duties. So that's not lost on me, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you to who, everyone that collaborated on the video, that's no small fee, and the students especially. Thank you students for being here, thank you Maplewood students, this is wonderful. Thank you for doing the pledge, and congratulations on your achievement of Student of the Week. And Mr. McNally, Mr. Ferguson, if there's anything else, we can dismiss your, your crew and get home safe, and thank you so much for sharing, appreciate it. Alright, thank you, and moving right along. Agenda item six, we have some policies this evening. Our first policy for first reading, EHAB data governance and security. Do I have a motion to read this by title only?
I motion-
Motion to read by title only?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Board Member Clark, would you mind reading the policy by title only? This is the first read.
Absolutely, so... Data governance and security.
Yep, EHAB, okay.
EHAB, yep.
Alright, this is the first time you're seeing it on your agenda, so it will be at our, up for adoption at our meeting on the 30th. Agenda item 6.2, our policies for second reading. Do I have a motion to read these by title only as well? Just, yep.
I motion to read by title only.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the title only reading, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright. Board Member Clark, can we go and vote on each one, one by one?
Okay, so B E D G, meeting minutes.
Okay, this has been read in December in second. So I'm looking for a motion to adopt this policy, B E D G, meeting minutes. Yep, as present, yep.
Meeting minutes.
Yep, absolutely, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, B E D G is adopted. Alright, next one, please.
Um, EBCC, false alarms, bombs, active shooter, and other such threats.
Okay. EBCC, do I have a motion to adopt this policy?
Motion to adopt policy EBCC.
Second. Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. EBCC is adopted. And lastly, I J O A, Board Member Clark.
Is field trips and excursions.
Okay. Last one. Do I have a motion to adopt this as presented and read?
A motion to adopt I J O A as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all policies are adopted. Agenda item number seven, we have some new business. 7.1, our school board committee assignments. You have this in front of you. Let's see if I have another one here. Thank you. Alright. Any discussion or questions about this? We do have three members on each committee and an alternate. So it used to be four, but now it's three due to our size, and we'll be getting a schedule out as soon as possible for the winter and spring of this year for committees. Alright, our agenda item 7.2, our proposed 2024-25 school calendar. It's the first reading, this will be read a second time for adoption on our meeting on the 30th. There is an update for September. September 10th is the New Hampshire primary. The surrounding schools are looking at what to do there, that has not been adjusted yet. It was kind of missed, you know, looked over by not just, not just us, but other districts as well. So we'll have to adjust that. Are there any comments on the calendar as it's been presented? I think, I think it looks pretty good, but we do wanna, if there's any feedback from the community, it will be read at our meeting on the 30th. Alright, agenda item 7.3, the student trip to the Dominican Republic in 2025. I think, yep. Wonderful, come on up. Welcome.
I'm Katie Summers.
Hold on Katie, is your, is your microphone on, just?
Uh, so I teach-
Is it on? There we go.
Sorry.
Perfect, no prob-
Great. So I'm Katie Summers, I teach English to speakers of other languages at the middle school and the high school.
And I'm Celeste Faren, and I teach French and Spanish over at the high school.
Right. So we would like to chaperone a trip to the Dominican Republic during the February vacation of 2025. Right, we just think it would be an excellent opportunity for students to travel to a foreign country, get to speak Spanish in a real, real life setting, and gain some, some multicultural awareness and experience. So yeah, I'm not sure if you have-
I think we're trying to keep it short tonight considering the weather, but we are here, if you have any questions for us. We've both been to the Dominican Republic and are familiar with the area and have traveled with students-
Wonderful.
-as well.
Yep, per policy, it comes to the school board for any foreign travel, and it has been a while since there's been an opportunity for foreign travel. So thank you both for bringing this to our students for next year, it's appreciated. A lot of information was in our packet about the travel and the specifics. Are there any questions for our teachers now? Yep?
I do have a couple questions. One would be, what students are you looking at? I didn't see it in the pack, packet.
All students are welcome to-
So freshmen through senior? Okay.
Yeah, high school level, so it would be, it would be students in grades nine through 12, yeah.
And typically, we would give priority to the students who are in the various languages. So yes, so all students or Spanish students would be priority, and then we would open it up to others as well.
And how many, how many are, slots are available?
So we, we've sort of decided that we'd have, we'd go with a minimum of 12 and a maximum of 24.
Okay.
And the reason we choose 12 is it's typically a one to six ratio with the chaperones, and we certainly wouldn't want to do a trip without at least two chaperones on it.
Yep, perfect. Any other questions? This is amazing, thank you so much for the presented opportunity. It's to go to the Dominican, and you know, we have, I have friends there, and I think it's wonderful, and keep it up. Hopefully, a lot of students are interested, but if there's any needs or other updates, feel free to come and let us know. But, um, thank you. I don't know officially from the boards, and it looks like we're all in support of this happening. It kind of comes to us for approval, but if there's another level needed, we can do that. But it looks like this board is in full approval of this, yeah.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure to have that before sharing the information with students.
Perfect. Yes, please go for it, thank you. Thank you both, yes.
Thank you.
Alright. That's it for new business, we have no old business this evening. Our future meeting dates, January 18th is a Budget and Revenue Committee meeting at the SAU at 5:30. Our next board meeting is January 30th at 7:00 PM. We have one meeting in the middle of February, I believe it's the 14th. And that is all. Any comments by visitors this evening? I do not believe there are any, you're welcome. Comments by board members? We'll start welcoming our new board members, Sarah O'Brien-Hart and Crystal D. St. Croix. If you wanted to start, but otherwise typically, if you just raise your hand, I'll call on you for any final comments at the end of the evening.
Sure, I'll talk.
Board Member D. St. Croix, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to thank you all for this amazing opportunity for me to be able to enhance and enrich with the community school of Summersworth. I'm extremely excited to be able to have this opportunity to work with all of you and with the school environment. Thank you so much for having me.
Board Member Clark, followed by Marsh.
So I write out mine because I can't remember a thing, but I just wanted to take a minute and welcome the new school board members, but as well as welcome back the new old wees? I don't know, what are we, 10 years? I don't know, newly, what are we, we're welcome back. Anyways, moving on. I... Yeah, and then Martin Luther King Day is on Monday, so I just wanted to share a couple of quotes that are my favorite. I guess making fun of me, it's fine if you are laughing, it's fine. So my first favorite quote of Martin Luther King Jr. is, "A darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." And that came from His Strength to Love in 1963. His other one is, comes from his march for integrated schools in April 18, 1915-9, and it's, "Make a career of humanity, commit yourself to the noble struggle for equal rights. You will make a better person of yourself, a greater nation of your country, and a finer world to live in." I think those are great words to live by. That's why I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Board Member Marsh, yep.
First, I appreciate those words, thank you. And actually, what you are now, Board Member Clark, is part of the establishment. So, I don't know, your experience, and I appreciate that. So, I know we've been asked to be efficient, and I am capable of that. So, you know, first I want to say that I want to welcome the new board members. Crystal and Sarah, thank you for being here. Thank you for running, and, and congratulations on being selected by the people of Summersworth. I truly believe that the school board is one of the more purest forms of representation, really in communities, because the vast majority of school board members are not here for any political endeavors, any future political endeavors, right? And many school board members serve with, for many, for most, it's their very first experience in government, in elected service. Many have, may have never attended a school board meeting or a city council meeting. But you're here, but it's pure because you're here because of the children. And so, I appreciate you being here, and thank you for serving, as well as the returning school board members, because I think the easier decision sometimes is not to return, in some ways. So I appreciate you serving as well. You know, I think that there is value, and you know, I joke about establishment, but there is value in experience. But I also think that there's value in thoughts that are not clouded by experience, sometimes. You know, I think it can help with vision of not having that experience behind you sometimes. So I think it's going to be an eclectic board moving forward, and I'm looking forward to it. I hope that residents of Ward Five, I consider serving as well for the reasons that I stated. I think I'm a relatively nice person, maybe on the annoying side. A little smirk from Dennis Messier, because he did sit next to me on the city council, so. And, and speaking of Dennis Messier, I appreciate you being here as representative of the city council, former school board member yourself. So, I will stop there, thank you.
Wonderful, yes, Board Member O'Brien-Hart.
Okay, just very quickly, I look forward to serving with all of you. I appreciate the community of Summersworth for electing me to serve. And as an educator myself, I'm really looking forward to supporting our school administrators, educators, students, staff, in the good work that they do. So I am just happy to be here, so thank you.
Okay, Board Member Wenworth, yep.
Everyone else did it. Okay, welcome to our new members, and I feel very, very lonely up here. Thank you for being here, Todd, but you're far away. In a great presentation, I can't believe that my kiddo was- In a great, uh, presentation, uh, I can't believe that my kiddo was ever small enough to go to Maplewood. It goes by so fast. Um, and those Martin Luther King quotes are not lost. They're actually on my voice now. So if you ever, um, call me, you get to hear some lovely quotes. Yes, and so hopefully, on the 10th, we can all take a moment to realize how far we've come and how much further we have to go. So, um, and hopefully, I'm excited for the next two years of work, so everyone drive home safely.
Yes, thank you to all the returning members. Thank you and welcome. Thank you, Counselor Messier, for being here. You don't always have to come, but you're welcome. Thank you to all of our staff, administrators, teachers, um, everyone doing the work. It's midwinter. It's a, it's a tough time to get through. But I'm very confident in our future. Thank you to our students. Please, uh, be safe, and we'll see about the call tomorrow morning for school. Looking for a final motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright. Meeting adjourned. Thirty-two minutes.